We are waiting for our third member for a quorum for the commission meeting to start.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.[958.65][958.65][S02. Thank you.[958.67][958.67][S02. Thank you.[958.69][958.69][S02. Thank you.[958.71][958.71][S02. Thank you.[958.73][958.73][S02. Thank you.[958.75][958.75][S02. Thank you.[958.77][958.77][S02. Thank you.[958.79][958.79][S02. Thank you.[958.81][958.81][S02. Thank you.[958.83][958.83][S02. Thank you.[958.85][958.85][S02. Thank you.[958.87][958.87][S02. Thank you.[958.89][958.89][S02. Thank you.[958.91][958.91][S02. Thank you.[958.93][958.93][S02. Thank you.[958.95][958.95][S02. Thank you.[958.97][958.97][S02. Thank you.[958.99][958.99][S02. Thank you.[959.01][959.01][S02. Thank you.[959.03][959.03][S02. Thank you.[959.05][959.05][S02. Thank you.[959.07][959.07][S02. Thank you.[959.09][959.09][S02. Thank you.[959.11][959.11][S02. Thank you.[959.13][959.13][S02. Thank you.[959.15][959.15][S02. Thank you.[959.17][959.17][S02. Thank you.[959.19][959.19][S02. Thank you.[959.21][959.21][S02. Thank you.[959.23][959.23][S02. Thank you.[959.25][959.25][S02. Thank you.[959.27][959.27][S02. Thank you.[959.29][959.29][S02. Thank you.[959.31][959.31][S02. Thank you.[959.33][959.33][S02. Thank you.[959.35][959.35][S02. Thank you.[959.37][959.37][S02. Thank you.[959.39][959.39][S02. Thank you.[959.41][959.41][S02. Thank you.[959.43][959.43][S02. Thank you.[959.45][959.45][S02. Thank you.[959.47][959.47][S02. Thank you.[959.49][959.49][S02. Thank you.[959.51][959.51][S02. Thank you.[959.53][959.53][S02. Thank you.[959.55][959.55][S02. Thank you.[959.57][959.57][S02. Thank you.[959.59][959.59][S02. Thank you.[959.61][959.61][S02. Thank you.[959.63][959.63][S02. Thank you.[959.65][959.65][S02. Thank you.[959.67][959.67][S02. Thank you.[959.69][959.69][S02. Thank you.[959.71][959.71][S02. Thank you.[959.73][959.73][S02. Thank you.[959.75][959.75][S02. Thank you.[959.77][959.77][S02. Thank you.[959.79][959.79][S02. Thank you.[959.81][959.81][S02. Thank you.[959.83][959.83][S02. Thank you.[959.85][959.85][S02. Thank you.[959.87][959.87][S02. Thank you.[959.89][959.89][S02. Thank you.[959.91][959.91][S02. Thank you.[959.93][959.93][S02. Thank you.[959.95][959.95][S02. Thank you.[959.97][959.97][S02. Thank you.[960.00][960.00][S02. Thank you.[960.02][960.02][S02. Thank you.[960.04][960.04][S02. Thank you.[960.06][960.06][S02. Thank you.[960.08][960.08][S02. Thank you.[960.10][960.10][S02. Thank you.[960.12][960.12][S02. Thank you.[960.14][960.14][S02. Thank you.[960.16][960.16][S02. Thank you.[960.18][960.18][S02. Thank you.[960.20][960.20][S02. Thank you.[960.22][960.22][S02. Thank you.[960.24][960.24][S02. Thank you.[960.26][960.26][S02. Thank you.[960.28][960.28][S02. Thank you.[960.30][960.30][S02. Thank you.[960.32][960.32][S02. Thank you.[960.34][960.34][S02. Thank you.[960.36][960.36][S02. Thank you.[960.38][960.38][S02. Thank you.[960.40][960.40][S02. Thank you.[960.42][960.42][S02. Thank you.[960.44][960.44][S02. Thank you.[960.46][960.46][S02. Thank you.[960.48][960.48][S02. Thank you.[960.50][960.50][S02. Thank you.[960.52][960.52][S02. Thank you.[960.54][960.54][S02. Thank you.[960.56][960.56][S02. Thank you.[960.58][960.58][S02. Thank you.[960.60][960.60][S02. Thank you.[960.62][960.62][S02. Thank you.[960.64][960.64][S02. Thank you.[960.66][960.66][S02. Thank you.[960.68][960.68][S02. Thank you.[960.70][960.70][S02. Thank you.[960.72][960.72][S02. Thank you.[960.74][960.74][S02. Thank you.[960.76][960.76][S02. Thank you.[960.78][960.78][S02. Thank you.[960.80][960.80][S02. Thank you.[960.82][960.82][S02. Thank you.[960.84][960.84][S02. Thank you.[960.86][960.86][S02. Thank you.[960.88][960.88][S02. Thank you.[960.90][960.90][S02. Thank you.[960.92][960.92][S02. Thank you.[960.94][960.94][S02. Thank you.[960.96][960.96][S02. Thank you.[960.98][960.98][S02. Thank you.[961.00][961.00][S02. Thank you.[961.02][961.02][S02. Thank you.[961.04][961.04][S02. Thank you.[961.06][961.06][S02. Thank you.[961.08][961.08][S02. Thank you.[961.10][961.10][S02. Thank you.[961.12][961.12][S02. Thank you.[961.14][961.14][S02. Thank you.[961.16][961.16][S02. Thank you.[961.18][961.18][S02. Thank you.[961.20][961.20][S02. Thank you.[961.22][961.22][S02. Thank you.[961.24][961.24][S02. Thank you.[961.26][961.26][S02. Thank you.[961.28][961.28][S02. Thank you.[961.30][961.30][S02. Thank you.[961.32][961.32][S02. Thank you.[961.34][961.34][S02. Thank you.[961.36][961.36][S02. Thank you.[961.38][961.38][S02. Thank you.[961.40][961.40][S02. Thank you.[961.42][961.42][S02. Thank you.[961.44][961.44][S02. Thank you.[961.46][961.46][S02. Thank you.[961.48][961.48][S02. Thank you.[961.50][961.50][S02. Thank you.[961.52][961.52][S02. Thank you.[961.54][961.54][S02. Thank you.[961.56][961.56][S02. Thank you.[961.58][961.58][S02. Thank you.[961.60][961.60][S02. Thank you.[961.62][961.62][S02. Thank you.[961.64][961.64][S02. Thank you.[961.66][961.66][S02. Thank you.[961.68][961.68][S02. Thank you.[961.70][961.70][S02. Thank you.[961.72][961.72][S02. Thank you.[961.74][961.74][S02. Thank you.[961.76][961.76][S02. Thank you.[961.78][961.78][S02. Thank you.[961.80][961.80][S02. Thank you.[961.82][961.82][S02. Thank you.[961.84][961.84][S02. Thank you.[961.86][961.86][S02. Thank you.[961.88][961.88][S02. Thank you.[961.90][961.90][S02. Thank you.[961.92][961.92][S02. Thank you.[961.94][961.94][S02. Thank you.[961.96][961.96][S02. Thank you.[961.98][961.98][S02. Thank you.[961.99][961.99][S02. Thank you.[962.01][962.01][S02. Thank you.[962.03][962.03][S02. Thank you.[962.05][962.05][S02. Thank you.[962.07][962.07][S02. Thank you.[962.09][962.09][S02. Thank you.[962.11][962.11][S02. Thank you.[962.13][962.13][S02. Thank you.[962.15][962.15][S02. Thank you.[962.17][962.17][S02. Thank you.[962.19][962.19][S02. Thank you.[962.21][962.21][S02. Thank you.[962.23][962.23][S02. Thank you.[962.25][962.25][S02. Thank you.[962.27][962.27][S02. Thank you.[962.29][962.29][S02. Thank you.[962.31][962.31][S02. Thank you.[962.33][962.33][S02. Thank you.[962.35][962.35][S02. Thank you.[962.37][962.37][S02. Thank you.[962.39][962.39][S02. Thank you.[962.41][962.41][S02. Thank you.[962.43][962.43][S02. Thank you.[962.45][962.45][S02. Thank you.[962.47][962.47][S02. Thank you.[962.49][962.49][S02. Thank you.[962.51][962.51][S02. Thank you.[962.53][962.53][S02. Thank you.[962.55][962.55][S02. Thank you.[962.57][962.57][S02. Thank you.[962.59][962.59][S02. Thank you.[962.61][962.61][S02. Thank you.[962.63][962.63][S02. Thank you.[962.65][962.65][S02. Thank you.[962.67][962.67][S02. Thank you.[962.69][962.69][S02. Thank you.[962.71][962.71][S02. Thank you.[962.73][962.73][S02. Thank you.[962.75][962.75][S02. Thank you.[962.77][962.77][S02. Thank you.[962.79][962.79][S02. Thank you.[962.81][962.81][S02. Thank you.[962.83][962.83][S02. Thank you.[962.85][962.85][S02. Thank you.[962.87][962.87][S02. Thank you.[962.89][962.89][S02. Thank you.[962.91][962.91][S02. Thank you.[962.93][962.93][S02. Thank you.[962.95][962.95][S02. Thank you.[962.97][962.97][S02. Thank you.[962.99][962.99][S02. Thank you.[963.01][963.01][S02. Thank you.[963.03][963.03][S02. Thank you.[963.05][963.05][S02. Thank you.[963.07][963.07][S02. Thank you.[963.09][963.09][S02. Thank you.[963.11][963.11][S02. Thank you.[963.13][963.13][S02. Thank you.[963.15][963.15][S02. Thank you.[963.17][963.17][S02. Thank you.[963.19][963.19][S02. Thank you.[963.21][963.21][S02. Thank you.[963.23][963.23][S02. Thank you.[963.25][963.25][S02. Thank you.[963.27][963.27][S02. Thank you.[963.29][963.29][S02. Thank you.[963.31][963.31][S02. Thank you.[963.33][963.33][S02. Thank you.[963.35][963.35][S02. Thank you.[963.37][963.37][S02. Thank you.[963.39][963.39][S02. Thank you.[963.41][963.41][S02. Thank you.[963.43][963.43][S02. Thank you.[963.45][963.45][S02. Thank you.[963.47][963.47][S02. Thank you.[963.49][963.49][S02. Thank you.[963.51][963.51][S02. Thank you.[963.53][963.53][S02. Thank you.[963.55][963.55][S02. Thank you.[963.57][963.57][S02. Thank you.[963.59][963.59][S02. Thank you.[963.61][963.61][S02. Thank you.[963.63][963.63][S02. Thank you.[963.65][963.65][S02. Thank you.[963.67][963.67][S02. Thank you.[963.69][963.69][S02. Thank you.[963.71][963.71][S02. Thank you.[963.73][963.73][S02. Thank you.[963.75][963.75][S02. Thank you.[963.77][963.77][S02. Thank you.[963.79][963.79][S02. Thank you.[963.81][963.81][S02. Thank you.[963.83][963.83][S02. Thank you.[963.85][963.85][S02. Thank you.[963.87][963.87][S02. Thank you.[963.89][963.89][S02. Thank you.[963.91][963.91][S02. Thank you.[963.93][963.93][S02. Thank you.[963.95][963.95][S02. Thank you.[963.97][963.97][S02. Thank you.[963.99][963.99][S02. Thank you.[964.01][964.01][S02. Thank you.[964.03][964.03][S02. Thank you.[964.05][964.05][S02. Thank you.[964.07][964.07][S02. Thank you.[964.09][964.09][S02. Thank you.[964.11][964.11][S02. Thank you.[964.13][964.13][S02. Thank you.[964.15][964.15][S02. Thank you.[964.17][964.17][S02. Thank you.[964.19][964.19][S02. Thank you.[964.21][964.21][S02. Thank you.[964.23][964.23][S02. Thank you.[964.25][964.25][S02. Thank you.[964.27][964.27][S02. Thank you.[964.29][964.29][S02. Thank you.[964.31][964.31][S02. Thank you.[964.33][964.33][S02. Thank you.[964.35][964.35][S02. Thank you.[964.37][964.37][S02. Thank you.[964.39][964.39][S02. Thank you.[964.41][964.41][S02. Thank you.[964.43][964.43][S02. Thank you.[964.45][964.45][S02. Thank you.[964.47][964.47][S02. Thank you.[964.49][964.49][S02. Thank you.[964.51][964.51][S02. Thank you.[964.53][964.53][S02. Thank you.[964.55][964.55][S02. Thank you.[964.57][964.57][S02. Thank you.[964.59][964.59][S02. Thank you.[964.61][964.61][S02. Thank you.[964.63][964.63][S02. Thank you.[964.65][964.65][S02. Thank you.[964.67][964.67][S02. Thank you.[964.69][964.69][S02. Thank you.[964.71][964.71][S02. Thank you.[964.73][964.73][S02. Thank you.[964.75][964.75][S02. Thank you.[964.77][964.77][S02. Thank you.[964.79][964.79][S02. Thank you.[964.81][964.81][S02. Thank you.[964.83][964.83][S02. Thank you.[964.85][964.85][S02. Thank you.[964.87][964.87][S02. Thank you.[964.89][964.89][S02. Thank you.[964.91][964.91][S02. Thank you.[964.93][964.93][S02. Thank you.[964.95][964.95][S02. Thank you.[964.97][964.97][S02. Thank you.[964.99][964.99][S02. Thank you.[965.01][965.01][S02. Thank you.[965.03][965.03][S02. Thank you.[965.05][965.05][S02. Thank you.[965.07][965.07][S02. Thank you.[965.09][965.09][S02. Thank you.[965.11][965.11][S02. Thank you.[965.13][965.13][S02. Thank you.[965.15][965.15][S02. Thank you.[965.17][965.17][S02. Thank you.[965.19][965.19][S02. Thank you.[965.21][965.21][S02. Thank you.[965.23][965.23][S02. Thank you.[965.25][965.25][S02. Thank you.[965.27][965.27][S02. Thank you.[965.29][965.29][S02. Thank you.[965.31][965.31][S02. Thank you.[965.33][965.33][S02. Thank you.[965.35][965.35][S02. Thank you.[965.37][965.37][S02. Thank you.[965.39][965.39][S02. Thank you.[965.41][965.41][S02. Thank you.[965.43][965.43][S02. Thank you.[965.45][965.45][S02. Thank you.[965.47][965.47][S02. Thank you.[965.49][965.49][S02. Thank you.[965.51][965.51][S02. Thank you.[965.53][965.53][S02. Thank you.[965.55][965.55][S02. Thank you.[965.57][965.57][S02. Thank you.[965.59][965.59][S02. Thank you.[965.61][965.61][S02. Thank you.[965.63][965.63][S02. Thank you.[965.65][965.65][S02. Thank you.[965.67][965.67][S02. Thank you.[965.69][965.69][S02. Thank you.[965.71][965.71][S02. Thank you.[965.73][965.73][S02. Thank you.[965.75][965.75][S02. Thank you.[965.77][965.77][S02. Thank you.[965.79][965.79][S02. Thank you.[965.81][965.81][S02. Thank you.[965.83][965.83][S02. Thank you.[965.85][965.85][S02. Thank you.[965.87][965.87][S02. Thank you.[965.89][965.89][S02. Thank you.[965.91][965.91][S02. Thank you.[965.93][965.93][S02. Thank you.[965.95][965.95][S02. Thank you.[965.97][965.97][S02. Thank you.[965.99][965.99][S02. Thank you.[966.01][966.01][S02. Thank you.[966.03][966.03][S02. Thank you.[966.05][966.05][S02. Thank you.[966.07][966.07][S02. Thank you.[966.09][966.09][S02. Thank you.[966.11][966.11][S02. Thank you.[966.13][966.13][S02. Thank you.[966.15][966.15][S02. Thank you.[966.17][966.17][S02. Thank you.[966.19][966.19][S02. Thank you.[966.21][966.21][S02. Thank you.[966.23][966.23][S02. Thank you.[966.25][966.25][S02. Thank you.[966.27][966.27][S02. Thank you.[966.29][966.29][S02. Thank you.[966.31][966.31][S02. Thank you.[966.33][966.33][S02. Thank you.[966.35][966.35][S02. Thank you.[966.37][966.37][S02. Thank you.[966.39][966.39][S02. Thank you.[966.41][966.41][S02. Thank you.[966.43][966.43][S02. Thank you.[966.45][966.45][S02. Thank you.[966.47][966.47][S02. Thank you.[966.49][966.49][S02. Thank you.[966.51][966.51][S02. Thank you.[966.53][966.53][S02. Thank you.[966.55][966.55][S02. Thank you.[966.57][966.57][S02. Thank you.[966.59][966.59][S02. Thank you.[966.61][966.61][S02. Thank you.[966.63][966.63][S02. Thank you.[966.65][966.65][S02. Thank you.[966.67][966.67][S02. Thank you.[966.69][966.69][S02. Thank you.[966.71][966.71][S02. Thank you.[966.73][966.73][S02. Thank you.[966.75][966.75][S02. Thank you.[966.77][966.77][S02. Thank you.[966.79][966.79][S02. Thank you.[966.81][966.81][S02. Thank you.[966.83][966.83][S02. Thank you.[966.85][966.85][S02. Thank you.[966.87][966.87][S02. Thank you.[966.89][966.89][S02. Thank you.[966.91][966.91][S02. Thank you.[966.93][966.93][S02. Thank you.[966.95][966.95][S02. Thank you.[966.97][966.97][S02. Thank you.[966.99][966.99][S02. Thank you.[967.01][967.01][S02. Thank you.[967.03][967.03][S02. Thank you.[967.05][967.05][S02. Thank you.[967.07][967.07][S02. Thank you.[967.09][967.09][S02. Thank you.[967.11][967.11][S02. Thank you.[967.13][967.13][S02. Thank you.[967.15][967.15][S02. Thank you.[967.17][967.17][S02. Thank you.[967.19][967.19][S02. Thank you.[967.21][967.21][S02. Thank you.[967.23][967.23][S02. Thank you.[967.25][967.25][S02. Thank you.[967.27][967.27][S02. Thank you.[967.29][967.29][S02. Thank you.[967.31][967.31][S02. Thank you.[967.33][967.33][S02. Thank you.[967.35][967.35][S02. Thank you.[967.37][967.37][S02. Thank you.[967.39][967.39][S02. Thank you.[967.41][967.41][S02. Thank you.[967.43][967.43][S02. Thank you.[967.45][967.45][S02. Thank you.[967.47][967.47][S02. Thank you.[967.49][967.49][S02. Thank you.[967.51][967.51][S02. Thank you.[967.53][967.53][S02. Thank you.[967.55][967.55][S02. Thank you.[967.57][967.57][S02. Thank you.[967.59][967.59][S02. Thank you.[967.61][967.61][S02. Thank you.[967.63][967.63][S02. Thank you.[967.65][967.65][S02. Thank you.[967.67][967.67][S02. Thank you.[967.69][967.69][S02. Thank you.[967.71][967.71][S02. Thank you.[967.73][967.73][S02. Thank you.[967.75][967.75][S02. Thank you.[967.77][967.77][S02. Thank you.[967.79][967.79][S02. Thank you.[967.81][967.81][S02. Thank you.[967.83][967.83][S02. Thank you.[967.85][967.85][S02. Thank you.[967.87][967.87][S02. Thank you.[967.89][967.89][S02. Thank you.[967.91][967.91][S02. Thank you.[967.93][967.93][S02. Thank you.[967.95][967.95][S02. Thank you.[967.97][967.97][S02. Thank you.[967.99][967.99][S02. Thank you.[968.01][968.01][S02. Thank you.[968.03][968.03][S02. Thank you.[968.05][968.05][S02. Thank you.[968.07][968.07][S02. Thank you.[968.09][968.09][S02. Thank you.[968.11][968.11][S02. Thank you.[968.13][968.13][S02. Thank you.[968.15][968.15][S02. Thank you.[968.17][968.17][S02. Thank you.[968.19][968.19][S02. Thank you.[968.21][968.21][S02. Thank you.[968.23][968.23][S02. Thank you.[968.25][968.25][S02. Thank you.[968.27][968.27][S02. Thank you.[968.29][968.29][S02. Thank you.[968.31][968.31][S02. Thank you.[968.33][968.33][S02. Thank you.[968.35][968.35][S02. Thank you.[968.37][968.37][S02. Thank you.[968.39][968.39][S02. Thank you.[968.41][968.41][S02. Thank you.[968.43][968.43][S02. Thank you.[968.45][968.45][S02. Thank you.[968.47][968.47][S02. Thank you.[968.49][968.49][S02. Thank you.[968.51][968.51][S02. Thank you.[968.53][968.53][S02. Thank you.[968.55][968.55][S02. Thank you.[968.57][968.57][S02. Thank you.[968.59][968.59][S02. Thank you.[968.61][968.61][S02. Thank you.[968.63][968.63][S02. Thank you.[968.65][968.65][S02. Thank you.[968.67][968.67][S02. Thank you.[968.69][968.69][S02. Thank you.[968.71][968.71][S02. Thank you.[968.73][968.73][S02. Thank you.[968.75][968.75][S02. Thank you.[968.77][968.77][S02. Thank you.[968.79][968.79][S02. Thank you.[968.81][968.81][S02. Thank you.[968.83][968.83][S02. Thank you.[968.85][968.85][S02. Thank you.[968.87][968.87][S02. Thank you.[968.89][968.89][S02. Thank you.[968.91][968.91][S02. Thank you.[968.93][968.93][S02. Thank you.[968.95][968.95][S02. Thank you.[968.97][968.97][S02. Thank you.[968.99][968.99][S02. Thank you.[969.01][969.01][S02. Thank you.[969.03][969.03][S02. Thank you.[969.05][969.05][S02. Thank you.[969.07][969.07][S02. Thank you.[969.09][969.09][S02. Thank you.[969.11][969.11][S02. Thank you.[969.13][969.13][S02. Thank you.[969.15][969.15][S02. Thank you.[969.17][969.17][S02. Thank you.[969.19][969.19][S02. Thank you.[969.21][969.21][S02. Thank you.[969.23][969.23][S02. Thank you.[969.25][969.25][S02. Thank you.[969.27][969.27][S02. Thank you.[969.29][969.29][S02. Thank you.[969.31][969.31][S02. Thank you.[969.33][969.33][S02. Thank you.[969.35][969.35][S02. Thank you.[969.37][969.37][S02. Thank you.[969.39][969.39][S02. Thank you.[969.41][969.41][S02. Thank you.[969.43][969.43][S02. Thank you.[969.45][969.45][S02. Thank you.[969.47][969.47][S02. Thank you.[969.49][969.49][S02. Thank you.[969.51][969.51][S02. Thank you.[969.53][969.53][S02. Thank you.[969.55][969.55][S02. Thank you.[969.57][969.57][S02. Thank you.[969.59][969.59][S02. Thank you.[969.61][969.61][S02. Thank you.[969.63][969.63][S02. Thank you.[969.65][969.65][S02. Thank you.[969.67][969.67][S02. Thank you.[969.69][969.69][S02. Thank you.[969.71][969.71][S02. Thank you.[969.73][969.73][S02. Thank you.[969.75][969.75][S02. Thank you.[969.77][969.77][S02. Thank you.[969.79][969.79][S02. Thank you.[969.81][969.81][S02. Thank you.[969.83][969.83][S02. Thank you.[969.85][969.85][S02. Thank you.[969.87][969.87][S02. Thank you.[969.89][969.89][S02. Thank you.[969.91][969.91][S02. Thank you.[969.93][969.93][S02. Thank you.[969.95][969.95][S02. Thank you.[969.97][969.97][S02. Thank you.[970.00][970.00][S02. Thank you.[970.02][970.02][S02. Thank you.[970.04][970.04][S02. Thank you.[970.06][970.06][S02. Thank you.[970.08][970.08][S02. Thank you.[970.10][970.10][S02. Thank you.[970.12][970.12][S02. Thank you.[970.14][970.14][S02. Thank you.[970.16][970.16][S02. Thank you.[970.18][970.18][S02. Thank you.[970.20][970.20][S02. Thank you.[970.22][970.22][S02. Thank you.[970.24][970.24][S02. Thank you.[970.26][970.26][S02. Thank you.[970.28][970.28][S02. Thank you.[970.30][970.30][S02. Thank you.[970.32][970.32][S02. Thank you.[970.34][970.34][S02. Thank you.[970.36][970.36][S02. Thank you.[970.38][970.38][S02. Thank you.[970.40][970.40][S02. Thank you.[970.42][970.42][S02. Thank you.[970.44][970.44][S02. Thank you.[970.46][970.46][S02. Thank you.[970.48][970.48][S02. Thank you.[970.50][970.50][S02. Thank you.[970.52][970.52][S02. Thank you.[970.54][970.54][S02. Thank you.[970.56][970.56][S02. Thank you.[970.58][970.58][S02. Thank you.[970.60][970.60][S02. Thank you.[970.62][970.62][S02. Thank you.[970.64][970.64][S02. Thank you.[970.66][970.66][S02. Thank you.[970.68][970.68][S02. Thank you.[970.70][970.70][S02. Thank you.[970.72][970.72][S02. Thank you.[970.74][970.74][S02. Thank you.[970.76][970.76][S02. Thank you.[970.78][970.78][S02. Thank you.[970.80][970.80][S02. Thank you.[970.82][970.82][S02. Thank you.[970.84][970.84][S02. Thank you.[970.86][970.86][S02. Thank you.[970.88][970.88][S02. Thank you.[970.90][970.90][S02. Thank you.[970.92][970.92][S02. Thank you.[970.94][970.94][S02. Thank you.[970.96][970.96][S02. Thank you.[970.98][970.98][S02. Thank you.[971.00][971.00][S02. Thank you.[971.02][971.02][S02. Thank you.[971.04][971.04][S02. Thank you.[971.06][971.06][S02. Thank you.[971.08][971.08][S02. Thank you.[971.10][971.10][S02. Thank you.[971.12][971.12][S02. Thank you.[971.14][971.14][S02. Thank you.[971.16][971.16][S02. Thank you.[971.18][971.18][S02. Thank you.[971.20][971.20][S02. Thank you.[971.22][971.22][S02. Thank you.[971.24][971.24][S02. Thank you.[971.26][971.26][S02. Thank you.[971.28][971.28][S02. Thank you.[971.30][971.30][S02. Thank you.[971.32][971.32][S02. Thank you.[971.34][971.34][S02. Thank you.[971.36][971.36][S02. Thank you.[971.38][971.38][S02. Thank you.[971.40][971.40][S02. Thank you.[971.42][971.42][S02. Thank you.[971.44][971.44][S02. Thank you.[971.46][971.46][S02. Thank you.[971.48][971.48][S02. Thank you.[971.50][971.50][S02. Thank you.[971.52][971.52][S02. Thank you.[971.54][971.54][S02. Thank you.[971.56][971.56][S02. Thank you.[971.58][971.58][S02. Thank you.[971.60][971.60][S02. Thank you.[971.62][971.62][S02. Thank you.[971.64][971.64][S02. Thank you.[971.66][971.66][S02. Thank you.[971.68][971.68][S02. Thank you.[971.70][971.70][S02. Thank you.[971.72][971.72][S02. Thank you.[971.74][971.74][S02. Thank you.[971.76][971.76][S02. Thank you.[971.78][971.78][S02. Thank you.[971.80][971.80][S02. Thank you.[971.82][971.82][S02. Thank you.[971.84][971.84][S02. Thank you.[971.86][971.86][S02. Thank you.[971.88][971.88][S02. Thank you.[971.90][971.90][S02. Thank you.[971.92][971.92][S02. Thank you.[971.94][971.94][S02. Thank you.[971.96][971.96][S02. Thank you.[971.98][971.98][S02. Thank you.[971.99][971.99][S02. Thank you.[972.01][972.01][S02. Thank you.[972.03][972.03][S02. Thank you.[972.05][972.05][S02. Thank you.[972.07][972.07][S02. Thank you.[972.09][972.09][S02. Thank you.[972.11][972.11][S02. Thank you.[972.13][972.13][S02. Thank you.[972.15][972.15][S02. Thank you.[972.17][972.17][S02. Thank you.[972.19][972.19][S02. Thank you.[972.21][972.21][S02. Thank you.[972.23][972.23][S02. Thank you.[972.25][972.25][S02. Thank you.[972.27][972.27][S02. Thank you.[972.29][972.29][S02. Thank you.[972.31][972.31][S02. Thank you.[972.33][972.33][S02. Thank you.[972.35][972.35][S02. Thank you.[972.37][972.37][S02. Thank you.[972.39][972.39][S02. Thank you.[972.41][972.41][S02. Thank you.[972.43][972.43][S02. Thank you.[972.45][972.45][S02. Thank you.[972.47][972.47][S02. Thank you.[972.49][972.49][S02. Thank you.[972.51][972.51][S02. Thank you.[972.53][972.53][S02. Thank you.[972.55][972.55][S02. Thank you.[972.57][972.57][S02. Thank you.[972.59][972.59][S02. Thank you.[972.61][972.61][S02. Thank you.[972.63][972.63][S02. Thank you.
August, is that you on the phone?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay. That is a foreman, sir.
So we can call this meeting the Stevenson Planning Commission to order special meeting. So. Ben, you want to go through the. Remote access procedures.
Absolutely. If anyone is on the phone, August already figured this out to mute or unmute yourself. You press star six to raise your hand in order to get the chair's attention and press star nine. And. Any other public on the phone, press their hands.
Remind folks that this is a special meeting of the of the planning commission. And so the only topic we can discuss is the topic on this agenda. Which is the permit revision for the Rock Creek pump station. So with that, Ben, you want to lead us through this?
Sure. I didn't print on the agenda this time, but it is a quasi judicial decision of the planning commission. And so these are decisions that require. You to be fair and impartial and also to demonstrate your fairness and impartiality through appearance of fairness disclosure. So I'll ask for all three of the planning commission members. Three questions, if you've had any expertise communications about this permit revision. If you have a specific financial conflict of interest with this proposal. Or if there's anything in general that would bias you in one way or the other inhibit your ability to be fair and impartial. Just throw that to all of you.
Okay. And go ahead.
Me who ahead? I'm being a newer commissioner, I really had to study this because it was a lot of information I hadn't had before. I agree with you exactly what you said earlier. It's pretty straightforward.
Oh, just.
Oh, on the yes. Sorry, I I have not had any conversations, sorry, or any of the others, yes.
No expertise contact, no financial interest. And I think I can be unbiased.
August, same three questions to you.
Uh, yeah, am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay, yes, I I have no financial interest. I've had no expertise communication. And I could be fair and make a good judgment.
Okay, uh, no disclosures from the commission about their ability to be fair and impartial. Jane Vale is representing applicants here. Jane, do you have any challenges to their ability to be fair and impartial in this decision?
No. Never heard anything, no.
Okay, then moving on into the meat of the decision here. You have a request to revise the shoreline substantial development permit issued to the city of Stevenson Public Works Department. That permit was issued for the Rock Creek pump station. This is the equipment that's on the east side of Rock Creek. The the east side of town drains into this pump station. It lifts it up to the bridge level so that it can gravity feed into the wastewater treatment plants. All of that was permitted in March of 2021. This requested revision adds. Improvements located at the treatment plant itself. Those improvements are detailed in the application. You have the ability to revise shoreline substantial permits, substantial development permits. Based on what really amounts to very minor criteria as part of your review. The description of the request and the applicant's review under those criteria have been included by. Planning professionals representing the applicant. Those were forwarded to you on Friday. Today, you got a draft revision to that permit. It includes. A review anew of the procedural requirements of SMC eighteen point four eight. That's the Stevenson Municipal Code adopting drawing. Master plan and the procedures related to it. And then another review of chapter two specifically of Steve Shoreline Master. It does not go into any detail in any of the other chapters because compliance was demonstrated in March of 2021 in those chapters. So this really just shows on a specific criteria. Approval required for revisions. The permits revision document. Specifics related to. To the revision are on page twenty seven of the packet and twenty eight of the packet. It goes on to include four. Permit conditions. The first is a general condition about appeals to this decision by the applicant. You need to happen according to the Stevenson Municipal Code provisions for that. The second is to provide reasonable access for shoreline administrator to review it. This one is also attached to the first permit and so that is the same. Third is to prepare as-built drawings of the specifically of the Fish and Wildlife. Habitat Conservation Area so that monitoring can be performed on that. This condition is inherent in the monitoring plan for the Fish and Wildlife Habitat area. But it was attached because there was a small change in the shoreline master program since. March of 2021, and this is a result of that change. The conditions based on that change. And finally, if there are any further revisions to this, that were notified of it. Evaluate whether you permit it's necessary, if another revision is necessary or.
Sorry, guys, I did not get that.
No worries, Davey. Just finished presenting the documents, almost finished. So in addition to attached to that new permit revision is the twenty one approval. And then just an administrative interpretation of notice requirements. So revisions went through the appropriate notices when the original permit was issued. And therefore they don't need to go through the same procedure again. We just need to notify anybody who was a party of record at the time of the original. Report. So in this case, there was no party of record, the testifiers and any comments in the previous one. No notice notification was necessary for them. Davey, before you participate in the decision making on this, we do the appearance of fairness. So have you had any expertise communications? Has anybody stopped you on the street about this permit revision? Is there any specific financial conflict of interest that you have in your. That clouds your ability to be fair and impartial in this decision, or is there just anything else that would?
Not my knowledge. Then. Let's see why it would.
So no disclosures by Commissioner Ray. Jane, again, you have the ability to challenge that?
No, I do not.
Okay. So that'll wrap up my portion of presentation, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ben. So we want just a summary of. What the work is going to be, what is being actually included in here might be helpful. And then I think we can work through the draft. Permit. Revision.
Best graphic I found to describe this was on page fifteen of the packet, page eight of the. Supporting narrative from the applicant where there are green highlighted areas. That were not included in the original permit for the pump station that are new components of the treatment. They've reviewed those areas. They've compared that to the area for what was permitted. I'll take a step back. So in those approval criteria for business permit, one of the key. Concepts is limiting it to ten percent of the permitted development as an increase. And so they've compared this green area to what was permitted on the other side of the creek. And to turn that that's six point five percent and underneath the ten. Jane would have to get into the specific details about what these components are within the treatment of wastewater. To explain that for you.
Yeah, I'm not sure we need to get into that level of detail. I just, you know, my question as I read through this was. What we permitted earlier was, as you mentioned, on the other side of the river. And how do we find ourselves now able to extend within this permit to something that is. You know, physically outside of that area that we originally dealt with.
It's a question I asked of the applicants early on in the process too. So now we're not only doing this expansion, we're moving into a different site or a different part of the river. And when we started looking at the permanent revision criteria, it just didn't seem like that was a barrier. That it's limited to the total amount of new. Work proposed and that they met that criteria.
Okay, I would also, if you wouldn't mind, I would also add that. Rock Creek Pump Station and the Treatment Plant are a bit integral to each other. Not only that Rock Creek is supplying a large amount of wastewater to the treatment plant and they're connected through a horse main. But also they share power basically and and SCADA systems. So instrumentation that allows city staff to operate Rock Creek Pump Station also. Is located on the treatment plant site. So it's not as much of a stretch as as it seems in that sense, even though they're two different sites.
So we should review the. The pump station on the other side is really being an integral part of the overall treatment plant is is at the bottom line.
They have shared facilities at the treatment plant site. The Rock Creek Pump Station has shared facilities at at the treatment plant site. So that that's all I'd like to add.
Okay, thank you.
This may be self evident, but is this related to the work that's going on down there right now and how to accommodate that?
He sort of the work going on there right now is outside of the shorelines area. So it's a they're getting ready to dig out a narration basin, which is outside of the shorelines area. It's a structure. I'm adding oxidation to the plant's processes, but it's part of the same project, yes.
Okay, and there's work happening at the approved site. And so they're they've finished. I don't know exactly where they're at, but on the east side of this room, they've. Been in process of doing that work over the past couple of months.
They're constructing the wet well right now. They just got out of the groundwater and they're making their way up, so, yeah.
The other aspect that's looked very closely at in the pre-application stage was the. Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Area. And so that portion of the project did cover both sides of the stream at the original. They did work to anticipate all of that in that review. And so the habitat mitigation plan that was put together in. The as part of the main, the original shoreline substantial development permit already covers this period.
Okay, that's helpful. August, any questions?
Uh, Jack, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yeah, no, I don't. I don't have any questions. I think it's pretty basically straightforward compared to what. You know, historically been used for.
Okay, well, my suggestion is, as we work through this. Draft. Permit revision starting on page seventeen. And I think I would just jump immediately to page eighteen and start looking at. The various criterion. Is that what you would suggest, Ben? As we go, do we go through those? Are there any questions?
That's certainly one way to do it. Uh, if you do approach it that way, generally try to facilitate reading of these things while still having a bunch of information. So that your eyes don't go totally crossed. We have the smaller text in gray, which is just the approval criteria for me. The Stevens Municipal Code or the SMP. The black text, which is slightly larger font, would be the planning commission's review. The findings that you would make associated with any of those criteria. Your conclusion of law relating those findings to the. Approval criteria or procedural criteria and then any conditions that are necessary for you to reach that conclusion of law.
Okay, thank you, Ben. So why don't we just start with. That criterion, section eighteen oh eight. Zero one zero administrative administration authorized. And let's just look at the findings there. And whether or not you agree with those findings. And the conclusion. We'll come back later and at the end of this and just do one motion over it. But sort of just a thumbs up if you're comfortable with those findings and conclusions of law and that criteria.
August, we will assume that you are a thumbs up unless you speak up and then we can pause on any one. On the on the right, so I'm in the room too. So we got we got two thumbs up.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, let's move on to the next one, the shoreline master program.
Yeah, I got a thumbs up too, sorry.
We could see it. Okay, master shoreline master program and map adoption. Thumbs up on that one?
One, nothing's jumping out at me still.
Yes, thumbs up.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next one. Applicability of provisions shorelines design designated.
We anticipate running into a state statute.
I don't think so. Thumbs up.
Yeah, I'm good.
Good thumbs up.
Okay, next one, shoreline permits and approvals required when?
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up here. Uh, next one, permits, application procedure.
Thumbs up.
Okay, moving to page twenty of the package, permits, notice publication.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up here. Thumbs up, baby. We can slow down, whatever you're comfortable with. Okay, the next one, permits and fees.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up, Anne's thumbs up. Baby's thumbs up. Next one, permits, interested parties, comment period.
Thirty days, is that good? Or twenty days after the last publication?
So that's for the new permits in this case, as a revision to a permit ecology guidance states. Additional notice period that's required. And we're only required to one notify any parties that had commented in that twenty day period. Listed and then provide notice of our final action to Department of Ecology within eight days.
So we're not going to tick anybody off.
I'm not going to say that, but we certainly haven't anybody that has commented in the past and made themselves a party. All right, I'm good with it.
All right, thumbs up. August, thumbs up. Gotcha.
Yep.
Planning Commission Action Category A Proposals. Thumbs up for man, thumbs up.
Yeah. Thumbs thumbs up.
Yeah.
Okay, thumbs up all the way around. Okay, next one, shoreline administration action category B proposes. This should be a pretty easy.
Very easy.
Notification and filing of action.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up. Appeal from permit decision.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up. Next one is appeal from administrator decision. Thumbs up. Permit issuance and effect.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up here.
Yeah.
And, okay. Permit duration extensions.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up. Okay with that, Davey?
Yeah.
Okay.
Didn't read all the fine print, but I read the bullet points.
Variants and conditional use permits ecology review.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up. Enforcement penalties.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
I'll go with it.
Okay, moving to chapter two, purpose and applicability. Thumbs up.
Where?
Page twenty three.
Page twenty three.
Chapter two.
Yeah, count me in.
Okay. Shoreline Administrator. Thumbs up.
Yeah.
These are pretty straightforward. Pre-application conference required.
Thumbs up.
All right.
Okay. Uh, pre-application conference purpose and outcomes.
Thumbs up.
Yeah.
Determination of ordinary high watermark.
Thumbs up.
Yes, that was done as part of the original permit. Thumbs up. Okay, permission required.
Thumbs up.
Yeah.
Thumbs up. Application context contents.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up. Application review and processing.
Thumbs up.
Hang on. Okay, I'm in.
Okay, thumbs up. Uh, next one is minor project authorizations.
Was the SSDP?
Shoreline substantial development.
Gotcha. All right, I'm good.
I'm good with that. Uh, next one is shoreline substantial development permits, purpose, applicability, criteria.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Yeah.
All four. Uh, next one, substantial development permits, permit process.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up, yeah.
Next one, shoreline conditional use permits. Thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Page twenty six shoreline variance.
Thumbs up.
Yeah.
Uh, next one, non-conforming use and development purpose, applicability, criteria.
Thumbs up.
All right, that's good.
Okay, thumbs up. Uh, next one, page twenty seven shoreline permit revisions.
Thumbs up.
Okay. Yeah. I guess I would also note that there are conditions in this permit that we didn't specifically call out, but are. Attached in here as well in terms of. As-built drawings, et cetera.
Tried to call him.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, but I didn't stop and dwell on them as we went through the conversation. Thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
And we have the final order. And look at that, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I would motion to approve as the.
Okay.
A second.
In seconds. Any further discussion, Davey?
No, I'm I'm in.
Okay. Then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you, Ben.
Thank you. My work feels valued that way. Jane, we're doing the plan specs next. Pull those up. Go through those as you.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that is good. Staff will take this, get the signature of the chair and forward on to Department of Ecology. The permit becomes effective immediately. Going to expand where the shovel goes.
All right.
All right. All right. Good, thank you uh, all for making a special meeting uh, on this in August for attending uh, law on the road.
Can I give you?
Thank you for uh, everything, thanks.
Can I give you a quick update? So I got in touch with Scott about the Amtrak idea. And he said he thought it was a great idea, but he said that he thought that in order for us to do that, Amtrak can only have so many stops along the way. And he said that for us to get one, Vention might have to give theirs up. And I doubt that would happen. I tried to get in touch with Amtrak and oh my god. So I don't know if I'm going to pursue that any further, but it was a thought.
Thank you, Davey. Okay. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, we stand adjourned. Thank you much.
All right.
Enjoy your. Thank you.
Thank you all.